It's more for you.
Okay, ready? We'll call the Newport City Council meeting order for Monday, December 2nd, 2019, 6:30 PM, City Council Room. All members are present with the exception of Ms. Rob Owen, who is absent this evening. Others includes Jim Johnson, our clerk treasurer, and Laura Dogan, our city manager. The next item will be to approve the minutes of November 18th, 2019.
Move to approve the minutes. I just sent it.
November 18th.
That's November 18th.
November 18th.
2019.
Correct.
On second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion on the minutes. Hearing those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Ayes have it. Motion carries. The next day is comments by members of the public. We have Lori Grim and her railroad square traffic.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Lori Grim. I live at 200 Mountain Drive in Newport. And first of all, I want to say for the record, I am absolutely pro-business and I'm excited that we have a new business in Newport. I am, however, concerned about the traffic. I realize that Domino's has only been open now for, what, two days? But I just, I have noticed a huge increase in traffic at a very dangerous intersection that we have had, already had several studies done on the traffic movement in that location. Last evening, Sunday night, at quarter till six, I came through that area and there were, at minimum, 10 to 15 cars in and around the parking lot. Traffic coming off the Causeway Bridge into town was stopped on the bridge and traffic from the Long Bridge was having difficulty turning onto Main Street. Today, I received a picture from a friend who took a picture of a truck with a trailer on the back that was partially parked into the road outside of the business. And tonight, when I came through at about 10 after 5, again, there were probably six cars in the parking lot and two vehicles pulled out in front of me while I was in the travel lane, not bothering to stop. I am very concerned. I want Domino's to succeed. I am concerned about the traffic patterns there and I'm wondering if, I realize it was an existing business, but if they had to go through any traffic studies at all with the type of business that they are and if our police department or city departments are going to do anything to help us with that intersection. I drive through that intersection twice a day and I think we're gonna see more struggles. Thank you.
Two points on that? Okay. I'll just answer one question. There was an existing pizza place already in there, so they didn't have to go through a whole traffic study. They just replaced Little G's Pizza. And like anything that's new, you get a lot of people in the beginning, you know, for anything that's new. But no, they didn't have to go through any special traffic because it's an existing facility, existing permits. I mean, not existing permits, they had to get a permit, but they did. It wasn't a change of use. It was a restaurant pizza place as it was, and so.
Except for looking at delivery.
Well, Little G delivered too, at times, you know. And I just look at it as a new business. It's the newness right now and I have a feeling it'll wear off within, it's like any new business. And so, it'll be something we can keep an eye on, but.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Moving on. The next item is the downtown designation presentation and we have Gary Holloway, who is the Downtown Program Manager. Welcome.
Thanks. If you'd stand back here or if you want to be out of your way.
I'll.
Stand right in front of you. So if this works, folks can hear me okay? Great. Thanks for, thanks for Lauren, Paul, and the city for inviting me here to present on the downtown program. It's a real honor to kind of meet with the public here in Newport. As I said, my name is Gary Holloway. I'm the Downtown Program Manager with Department Housing and Community Development. I'm going to talk a little bit about what that means. Essentially, what I do is I travel around the state supporting communities at the municipal level, at downtown organization levels. We support businesses and the community in general. So I wear a lot of different hats, but generally speaking, my role is to try and support communities and make them, help them make themselves better through some of the resources we have. So, within the agency of commerce where I work, we have Department Housing, Community Development, and then we have Community Planning. We're a mighty group of six in our division. We work statewide. We've got some professional planners. I work with larger communities and my coworker, Richard, works with the smaller villages across the state. But essentially, what we're trying to do, as you can see here, is tools, training, grants, and incentives to help for local leaders to plan and implement projects and support thriving, walkable communities. So that's kind of at the heart of what we do. Next slide. I wanted to give you context for where this downtown designation lives. So we're within the Community Planning Division. We have different designated programs. We have a Village Center Program. We have Downtown Program. We have Newtown Centers. Those are for a couple of communities that didn't have historic settlement areas, but they wanted something, so we gave them something. We have Neighborhood Development Areas and Growth Centers, which are add-on to the core designation that you have. So Newport has the downtown designation as the core designation, but in the future has the potential, if it wanted to, to apply for the Neighborhood Development Area, which I'm not going to discuss in detail today. Next slide. This is a snapshot of designations across the state. As you can see, we've populated many of the communities across the state. I think when I started, five years ago, in this position, there was 80-some Village Centers and we had about the same amount of downtowns. Since the downtowns are really for larger, developed communities, we have a lot less of them than we do Village Center designations. Next slide. And here is a snapshot of the map that shows you which communities in Vermont are designated. St. Johnsberry, Newport are the Northeast Kingdom kind of anchors for our downtown program. Excellent. So what is downtown designation? And this is what I'm gonna dive into a little bit, so you can understand what it is and how Newport has benefited and can continue to benefit from having this designation. Next slide. So our downtown program is really rooted in, in kind of smart growth, right? We have these old historic downtowns and villages across the state and at the heart of the program and why it was created in the first place was to help preserve the integrity, the integrity of these, the built environment that we have here in Vermont. So we focus our, you know, we focus our incentives and our investments in and around the core and surrounding area of the downtown and so we can preserve the rural landscape that we appreciate about Vermont. So I tell people it's, we're trying to help keep Vermont looking like Vermont. So our program is really rooted at that, trying to strengthen the neighborhoods that surround our downtown, trying to strengthen the businesses and the property owners that are making economic investments in the future. Next slide. And the other piece of it is really the historic preservation piece. The National Main Street Program, which we model our program after here in Vermont, was really, that was the root of it. We had a lot of, back in the, back in the 70s, we had a lot of businesses that were moving out of our downtowns into shopping malls and strip centers and it left a lot of our downtown buildings vacant. They suffered as a result of that. Plus, they're aging and as you see in this picture, this is the Brooks House in Brattleboro. You know, sometimes we have some disasters that happen like fires or floods and, you know, to take a block like this and to take it down, you know, is, it was, it was a big decision for them to make an investment in the future of that particular building. So, and I know Newport has made similar investments in terms of trying to keep what they have and invest in the future. Next slide. And then creating vibrant places, you know, who wants to go, there's not a lot going on. So trying to support the businesses, once again, municipalities and the downtown organizations that are trying to make our communities better, so we can attract people to come live here. It's important to have different features to make these places more vibrant, so that's, we also support those efforts. Next slide. We have overarching above, my bosses are the Downtown Development Board, who ultimately make the decisions around funding, which I'll get into in a minute, and the program in general. And it's made up of representatives from multiple agencies, from the agency of transportation, fire and safety, natural resources. We have the State Historic Preservation Officer. We also have representatives from the local government around the state. So we have town managers or staff from communities that are also helping influence some of the decisions that are made. We have business representation. And so, anytime there's a, you know, a property owner's applied for a tax credit, which I'll talk about in a minute, they, they are helping kind of review those applications, determine if they're going to get funded, or the Downtown Transportation Fund or these other funding sources that we have. Next slide. So, the designation is housed with the municipality. They're really the ones that had the designation. So the municipality applies to get this designation and there's certain requirements that we expect between the municipality and the downtown organization, helping to support these program requirements. So it's kind of, think of them, both of them having expectations that they're fulfilling with these requirements. Two years ago, Newport came in for a renewal. It used to be that we had a five-year renewal cycle. Now we have an eight-year renewal cycle. And with that, we set up a four-year review check-in. So it'll be two years, yeah, a little over two years before we have a check-in with the city. We have annual reinvestment statistics that we collect, which the city and the downtown organization kind of collaboratively work on. And this is information that we get from property business owners, investment the city's made, jobs gained and lost, businesses gained and lost, housing units gained, these sort of volunteer hours contributed, these sorts of things, so that we can then put all that information into a, you know, kind of aggregate it and present that to our other bosses, which are the legislature. We often have to testify and demonstrate what we're doing in our programs that are benefiting, you know, Vermont communities. So we take that information and we share it with them, not calling out any specific businesses or property owners, just generally collecting the information and sharing it. And then we have requirements such as attending trainings. We have three or four trainings a year. We have a big downtown historic preservation conference that we have each year in June. We have network meetings that we will rotate around different communities, so we can get to know what other communities are doing with their downtown programs and we can share ideas. We have a downtown retreat each year, which is our one kind of overnight that we have staff and I know, you know, the mayor's been there before and we've had board members from the organization come. And that's an opportunity for us to really kind of do a deep dive with, with our staff and board members in other downtown organizations. And then we have, and I'll go over this in just a minute, we have compliance with general criteria for the downtown program that's expected to meet, such as funding from the city and having, you know, confirmed initial plan and capital improvement plan and budget and these sorts of things that we expect, you know, our larger communities to have. Next slide. So here's just a snapshot, and I can go through this pretty quick, of the renewal, kind of what we expect when they come in with the application. You know, they have to let you all know that they're, you know, that they're applying for, reapplying. There have, there has to be some kind of a planning commitment. Newport has form-based codes, so that kind of satisfies our design requirements to have a local control. We have community reinvestment agreement. Next slide. We like to see what's, what's happening with the city, with their investment in their infrastructure in their downtown, with their capital improvement budget program. So things as are related to wastewater, public spaces, or lighting, or transportation, it's helpful for us to know what that vision that they have in, within the downtown specifically for this program. And then the downtown organization has some weight in this too, right? What's your five-year strategic plan? You know, who are the board members and your staff? I was, I'll go into that in a minute. And then, you know, what committees and, you know, what's the function of the downtown organization right now? So, that sort of thing. Next slide. We asked for an update. We want to know what's going on, what are successes, what are the challenges you're faced with, how can the state, you know, better support your efforts? You know, what are the funding resources that are available to support the downtown organization in their efforts to kind of fulfill that community reinvestment agreement? So, is the city contributing money? Is, you know, are the, is it private support? Are they getting sponsorships or funding through membership? You know, where are the different sources of funding to help make it so that that organization can do what they need to do to succeed? There's a boundary map and I can go to the next slide. That'll be the. Here's the downtown designation boundary. So with the designation, we've worked with the municipality to determine a proper boundary for that kind of historic settlement area. So it's not a city-wide boundary. As you can see, the purple line there is really just on the core of the downtown area. And really, the purpose of the boundary is to determine, for some of our programs, it's black or white, okay? A property is either in or it's out. I'll use the tax credit program, which I'll explain in just a minute, as an example. If a property is within it and they're applying for tax credits, they're eligible. If it's outside, they're not. We can amend this boundary from time to time at any point if the municipality says, you know what, we have a couple of properties that we really would make sense to include and they're right adjacent. That is something we can present to the downtown board and request an amendment and I can work with folks if that's ever a question in the future. Next slide. So I want to talk a little bit now about the benefits and how Newport has benefited from and some things that are potential benefits that they could use in the future. Downtown Transportation Fund, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna highlight that one in a minute. That's a, it's a, it's a fund that we have available to invest in transportation-related projects and I'm gonna show you some examples in a minute, so I won't talk more about that. Special Assessment Districts. Some of our municipalities have business improvement districts, which is essentially a, I hate to use the evil word, taxation on properties, but it's a taxation on properties that the property owners actually opt into. And they opt into it because they see the value of reinvesting in the downtown. So you'll have an area within a downtown, it could be a special improvement district that gets taxed and that money is dedicated towards whatever the municipality wants it dedicated towards. In many cases, it's towards economic development, capital improvement projects, sometimes doing marketing for the downtown. There's Act 250 exemptions because you're downtown on priority housing projects. And there's also kind of a fast-track Act 250 process for projects that may have permit, you know, permit fees capped. So there's a little saving for developers who are trying to develop in downtown if there is the downtown designation, because they get this Act 250. And that's one that we're really actually trying to go after a little bit harder. We know that our downtowns are brownfields. We know that there's, we're gonna dig up things that we don't want to see, so, you know, these are the areas we want to develop as opposed to greenfield development. So we're working on some legislation to try and change it so that we can have potentially some Act 3, you know, 250 zones. But we're working on that. It's a few-year process for us to kind of get there, but we're making some headway. And then, we offer technical assistance. We offer, there's state grant priorities. I'm gonna go over the list of kind of what are some of the priorities that you get if you're applying for the trans grant. Even though we don't control that funding, we've been able to get our fingers into a lot of other funding sources and say, hey, can you make it so that a priority goes to just the downtowns? And we've gotten a lot of our partners and sister agencies to say yes. That does make sense, to give them a priority. And then I'll talk in a minute about the tax credits. So we can go to the next slide. Here's, here's just a short list of some of the state grant priorities that you're qualified to apply for this funding regardless of the designation, but boy, it helps to get those additional points with these grants and others. Next slide. So the tax, a tax credit program is one of the big carrots of the, of the program. It's really for property owners. So it's, think of any income-producing property that's located within that boundary I showed you is eligible to receive tax credits. It's not for municipal buildings. It's not for churches. Nonprofits can even apply and what they do, actually, over half of the tax credits you get applied for actually gets sold back to banks and insurance companies because they don't have actually a liability. It's, we're not giving you the cash. It's tax credit that you're writing off of your income. So if you don't have a liability, like why don't you need a tax credit? Well, you could actually get the tax credit and then sell it, because banks need that liability and that write-off. But really, the purpose, the purpose of the program is, yes, there's disasters and these property owners need money, such as the St. Johnsberry Building that burned several years back. They got tax credits to help them put that building back together. It could be for code improvements. You know, I was just in the coworking space earlier today. That project took advantage of the tax credits to upgrade a building and bring it into the 21st century. So code improvements, elevators, facade improvements, if you're repointing bricks, redoing windows. So it's a very competitive program. We've gotten the amount up to $2.6 million, but we often have over $3, $3 or $4 million in requests, so we're constantly trying to up that so we can fund more projects. Next slide. So here's an example of one here in Newport. A couple of years ago, you know, the UPS store in town was kind of run down when the property owners bought it and they applied for the tax credits and were able to do some abatement work and code upgrades and facade renovations, kind of lower, you know, their total out cost out of their pocket for the project. Next slide. And then here's just a snapshot of just going back, you know, 10 or so years, 10, 12 years, on the different property owners that have been awarded tax credits. And as you can see, I mean, a couple of the projects, like the Work Commons, actually has applied a couple of times. Property owners can actually reapply. Not every single year, they, they have to skip, you know, a year or two and then they can reapply and get additional funding. So it's, yeah, you can pick and shovel, and the handicap home care and the Work Commons and the tasting centers. There's been quite a few projects that have benefited. Next slide. So here's just, you know, shows you a little over $700,000 have been awarded to property owners with a, you know, a little over seven, seven and a half million dollars in private investment, which I think is really, once again, it's a, it's not easy to be a developer in Vermont. They need all the help they can get to make these projects work and if we want our investments to be in downtown, then we need to give them some additional incentives, because it's much easier to build a brand-new building on a greenfield than it is to build an old, rickety historic building. It's maybe, you're gonna open it up and find something unpredictable. Next slide. I wanted to touch on this. This isn't something that Newport has taken advantage of, but could potentially. This is part of the pot of money that the tax credit comes out of, but it's called sales tax reallocation. And what it is, is an agreement between the city and the developer to say, we're gonna, if the project reaches a certain, you know, a certain level, it's gotta be at least $100,000, it's gotta be over $100,000, depending on the size of your city, we're gonna take the sales tax on the construction material and we're gonna, we're gonna reallocate it. So instead of that money going to wherever it goes, it's gonna stay here with this project, okay? And so imagine a portion of that money, a couple hundred thousand dollars potentially could stay with that project and put in a water line, put in a wastewater line, do some utility upgrades that make that project, that kind of assist that project. So it reduces the cost for the developer and really is no skin off of the city at all. It's just, they have to be part of that kind of agreement to say, we're gonna help support this application. So that's a real potential for future development here in Newport, so long as we have this program. Next slide. I'll go back. And this was just an example of St. Alden's Hampton Inn that went up two years ago. They were able to $103,000 for this, this project and made, made a difference. Okay, next slide. The Downtown Transportation Fund, I touched on it briefly, but it's, we have about $350,000 annually that we invest in streetscape projects. So it's, it's state money. It's pretty flexible. The municipality has to apply for it. The nice thing about this fund is you're only competing against the other 23 downtowns. You're not competing against like half a hundred different folks. It's, it's a small pool of folks. I usually get, you know, 10 to 12 applications, not everyone applies every year, so there's a decent chance of you getting it. And, go to the next slide. These are the types of things that we can, we can fund. Safety improvements, streetscape enhancements, wavefinding, street lighting, ADA access, ADA access improvements. If you go back to that last slide, this is, you know, you can see all the ADA access issues for Gins was having with this building with all the step-ups. And they got creative and they worked with the property owners and they said, hey, listen, we're gonna apply for this funding, but this is actually their property. So they put some skin in the game and the city put some skin in the game and they were able to put this nice ramp up across all of the businesses and multiple buildings to make it ADA accessible. So that was a creative, Virginia's has been really creative in utilizing that. The city does have to match it. There is a one-to-one match and it's a reimbursement. If you go to the next slide. Next slide. And here's, Newport was awarded $85,000 in 2019 for the project that's gonna happen right out here, which will be a great safety improvement and one of the recommendations that came out of the downtown master plan. Next slide. Municipal planning grants. Any community can apply for these, but once again, this is a priority given for downtowns. And here's a snapshot of some of the planning grants that Newport's received over the last few years. There's one actually in right now, a request to take a lot of those plans and be able to put together kind of implementation roadmap, a plan for targeted strategies for, for the recommendations that came out of those plans. You should find out very soon, probably within the week. Let's go on that. Community Development Program, which is, my coworkers, you know, work on this program. This is federal money that is, it's there to support businesses, it's there to support community development projects. And these are a few examples of the grants that were awarded, you know, to the cities that granted out to, you know, support different projects, such as the master plan or implementation for Tardner Park in most recent history. Next slide. I talked already a bit about the benefits. You can go onto our agency website and it shows you a listing of all of these. This is the funding directory and who to contact information is. It doesn't have everything on there, but these are the ones, the partners that were in agencies and projects that we most commonly run into. We tried to shortcut them a little bit, so folks can have access to it. Go to the next slide. And then, I spent a couple of minutes just talking about downtown organization and really the importance of having one. You know, that, while the municipality has a designation that's kind of their, they're the ones, the keepers of it, as a requirement of the program, they have to have a downtown organization. And it's, once again, it's based on kind of the National Main Street approach, where you have an organization that's collaboratively working with the city and with other partner organizations to help, you know, achieve your success. This is a snapshot of, you know, our downtown retreat that we have, that in September. And these are representatives from downtown organizations across the state. Go to the next slide. The type of work that you would expect the downtown organization to do is support existing businesses, recruiting new businesses, marketing the downtown, unification, be an advocate for the downtown. So as you can see, they're kind of the facilitators of the downtown program and the municipality is supporting them so that they can do their work. And, you know, working collaboratively with public and private partnerships is really the success of the program. If you can get the city and the downtown organization and these other interest groups and stakeholders working and rowing together in the same direction, that's where we see the greatest success. Easier said than done, I know, but that really is the truth, if you can just work together and, and have similar goals. Next slide. I've already talked about the trainings that we have, so we can skip this, skip this slide. We do a lot of advocacy for downtowns across the state. We work closely with the governor's office. These are some snapshots from last, I think, last year or two years ago, when we do this advocacy day in the state house, we'll often be invited into the governor's office and have a chance to talk to him one-on-one. Or we'll be invited to come into the house chamber and just let the legislature know what we're doing. We encourage our staff and board members to schedule meetings with their local reps if they don't meet with them regularly or talk with them, so they can let them know that these are some real challenges we're having. This is where we could use some support or thank you so much for supporting, you know, X, Y, or Z. And then, you know, the bottom picture here, last year was a special year, or this year. And then, you know, the bottom picture here, last year was a special year, or this year, we're not out of this year yet, 2019. We celebrated 20 years of the downtown program. So we had our downtown conference in Montpelier, we had it in the State House, and then across downtown, we had a street closure on Langdon Street and a way for us to kind of celebrate. And we partnered with an arts organization, New England Foundation for the Arts. And so we're often looking for new partnerships and this, this slide just kind of demonstrates that we're trying to, we're trying our best to advocate and celebrate at the same time. Next slide. I've talked already a bunch about partnerships, but this is just a fraction of the partners that we work with. We actually get together with, with our partners quarterly. We have a funders collaborative group that meets and talks about what's going on around the state and how we might be able to better position our funding and resources and expertise to support communities. Newport's been fresh in our mind and in conversations within the past year or so, looking at how we can support the work that you all are doing as a community. Next slide. We have a newsletter that we put out quarterly. You can go onto our website and you can sign up and this kind of gives you a snapshot on what's going on and with our programs, but also we try to highlight what's happening with the work that you all, communities like you all are doing. Next slide. Oh, that's it. Thank you.
Any questions for anyone from the council?
Can I just make a comment?
Yep.
It's a very motivating program and I've been the city manager since 2015. We've been able to partner with the downtown organization since 2016 and it has propelled us into the future. It has been transformational for this city to participate in this program and I'm thrilled. I'm really happy with it. We've got a beautification program that is something to be proud of. We have a handle on our infrastructure, the fact that we were able to get the first planning grant in 2017 and then the expanded scope grant, which produced the waterfront downtown master plan, which we're using in collaboration with the Newport City Downtown Development is the best thing that's happened because that's our roadmap and that's how we know that our funds are not being wasted. We're trying to get the most efficiency from each tax dollar that we can. And right now, we're going through our budget process as well as our capital, our five-year capital program renewal. So all of this is incredibly timely. I know that you came from Montpelier and there's a storm elsewhere.
Yeah.
So you're fine.
Safe.
And you are welcome to stay for as long as you want. I just want to thank you for taking the time to come up here and explain this to us.
Yeah, and I, one thing I should mention just on your comment, if you don't mind. You know, 10 years ago, like the work that you're doing right now, 10 years ago, St. Albans was doing. And if anyone has been to St. Albans in the last few years, you can see like this tremendous, you know, just change and vibrancy that's happening there. But they were in the trenches, you know, really doing the hard work that you don't get a chance to see. Like the planning, planning work, you don't always see right away, but just note, I think that the work that you're doing right now, you know, is, will contribute to that.
I think it will. And we often use the St. Albans model as our flagship. You know, if they can do it, we can do it, we can find a way. And that's been very helpful. And of course, Dominic Cloud is phone call away. And that's really helping. When you talk about sharing resources or learning what your communities are doing that's working for them, that we can potentially invoke here has been very helpful. So I'm, I'm really excited about it.
Great. Well, thanks, thanks again for inviting me.
Well, at this time, I do want to introduce Conrad Belavant. He is the Chair of the Newport City Downtown Development Board.
Board, yes.
And I thought maybe you could introduce some of your new board members, because there's quite a few new members on the board.
Yes, yes, we do.
Kind of a restructuring and revigorate, revigorate, new vigor.
New vigor, vibrant. Yes, we are. Gary, thank you very, very much for that great presentation. Again, Conrad Belavant's been on the, on the board for several years. Was starting out the Newport City Renaissance Corporation and now we are the, we've, we're doing business as Newport City Downtown Development, which more reflects exactly what we are here for and what we're doing. As the mayor said, we do have a, several new board members and, and some that have stuck with us for a few years, besides myself. Laura Dogan, again, city manager, has been a great asset to us, great communication between the city and the board and everything is right, you know, spot on. We stay connected and there's no lapse there. So that is a very, Laura's a very valuable asset to our board. Dan Power, who's the financial advisor and manages the local Edward Jones office down on Coventry Street. Rich Tetro, who's a retired V-Trans engineer, consulting engineer now in his retirement. I have Steven Wright, who's general manager and president of JP Resort. And Jennifer Gagel, a vice president and senior credit officer at Community National Bank. So that's our, that's our board. And we are also, I'd like to, at this time, we have a new hire, Jim Davis, who's in the back there. He is our economic development specialist as we move into the next phase of our mission here. Mission to bring industry, bring visitors, bring money, bring whatever we can bring to Newport. And, sorry, I lost my train of thought here. So, you know, we've waited for businesses to come and businesses haven't always come. We do have some new businesses, but maybe not the drive that we were looking for. And here we have, as Gary has got a photograph here, right in our downtown designated area, we have Lake Memphamagog. And so we're going to use Lake Memphamagog, we're going to use the countryside, the mountains, the rivers, the trails, the, everything that we have here. The outdoor recreational economy is going to be our focus as we move forward to draw people to this area. People often drive through Vermont. Why are they driving through Vermont? Where are they going? Why are they going there? Why aren't they stopping here? Those are some questions that we have to ask ourselves. With our strategic plan, building Newport's outdoor recreation economy, you've, folks have seen those, I think they came out last, two weeks ago or something that they were put out. And if anybody else wants a copy, we have other copies there. But the outdoor recreation economy in the state of Vermont has been recognized as $2.5 billion annual consumer sales. $2.5 billion annually people are spending in one way or another to participate in their outdoor recreation. And that's what we want to tap into. We have wonderful assets here, great opportunities, and we need to recognize even more of those, build on those, support our businesses that are in town already. Welcome new businesses and visitors and introduce visitors and the entire region, state, New England. Reach out further and further with our website, discovernewportvermont.com. We're keeping that, that's up to date with events that are going on. We're going to be, we've got a great work plan and I'm going to let Jim talk about the work plan a little bit because he's going to give you an idea of what we're going to be doing.
Oh, that's way to put me on the spot. Thank you, Conrad. For those of you who don't know me, I grew up in the area. Real quick, I work the North Country, I grew up in this area and I'm from wherever you like. I'm excited to be back. I spent the last 14, 15 years down in Limminville. I have an economic development background, I have a nonprofit background, and I'm an educator. So I've done all that. And, you know, we've got a plan for 2020 and basically it's outdoor recreation and we're going to be doing four key things. One is we're going to be working locally to develop videos to show the four seasons of what we can do in this community and how all the different assets in the community are available to us. We're going to be working on a collaborative business marketing plan where we're going to be building all kinds of different informational components, whether they're website components, brochures, signs and that, to show people, to get people to stop here in Newport. For many of you, if you've not been down in East Burke on a fall day, beautiful fall day, on a Saturday or Friday, it's packed with bikers and a lot of those bikers are going right by here on the freeway, East Burke. Our goal is to try to capture those. We're going to be doing a small business technology assistance program for 10 businesses in the community to help them improve their website and their, you know, their search engine optimization to kind of get people going to their websites, to their business. And then I'm going to work closely with CCV and the Career Center in connecting businesses with the students for jobs here in the community to keep those students here, to keep them in, in this community and that. So that's our focus for the next 12 months. And then 12 months and one day, the board and I will sit down along with the community and try to figure that out. Let you know, I am here in the Commons Building, where Commons Building, third floor. I'm usually in my office first thing in the morning and then the afternoon, I'm out visiting with, and meeting and introducing myself to every business here in the designated downtown. So if you ever want to come and chat with me, talk to me about thoughts and ideas and your opinions of what we can do, stop in and please come see me. I'm open and available to hear the things and what we can do in that fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you for the presentation.
Can I just, thank you, Gary, for coming out and Conrad and Jeff, you're sort of pulling this all together. We, having all the what downtown designation is, what the downtown board is, what are the new hires doing. I think there's been miss, or misunderstanding, I don't know about what the downtown designation is, and I think it's good to actually have all three pieces here at one time so that we can actually see the whole picture of it and not sort of piecemeal in a rumor or, you know, things like that. So I appreciate, personally, I appreciate the three of you giving your time to come and talk to us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank all the board members who came out. I know Steve's probably a thick of it, it's Jay with the snow, but.
Whacko.
Yeah, stayed south this time, too bad. But good for Gary to come up. All right, with that, we thank you. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the state drinking water revolving loan fund application and engineering contract. And we have Wayne Elliott here tonight to give us an overview and discuss this. And Tom's also here. All I know is this is something that's been coming down the pipeline for a while.
Hi, Wayne.
Yeah, good evening. So the subject is an exciting downtown development here. So we're talking about combined sewer flows.
But necessary.
Yes, absolutely. From a health, water quality issue. And it's an issue that, you know, several block communities are dealing with. You know, we redraft those occurrences in the paper on a pretty regular basis. The city has had a 1272 order in the past, so this isn't.
Can you speak up a little?
Yeah, sure. The city has had a 1272 order in the past, so this isn't new. And basically, you know, the city was issued a new 1272 order on February 19th, 2019. The city still has six, what we call kind of active overflow locations, so it's really to address each of those separate overflows. And one of the conditions of this order requires that the city submit a long-term control plan, this is a state requirement, by August 19th, 2020. This has all really got a lot more attention over the last year or two. EPA's put pressure on the state to kind of get their housekeeping in order, so it's really kind of a more of a federal requirement that's tripled down at the state. So to do this work, you know, the city needs to have a consultant engineer to do the work. And so the city went through, as required by the state, went through a qualifications-based selection process here back in September. We submitted, we were selected by the city as the most qualified firm to do the work. So that procurement policy or procedure is a requirement of the state for the city to receive the funds. The good news is that the, the state does process this as a loan application. The request here for the clean water SRF program is $79,400. The engineering part of that is $63,400. The city does qualify for 100% loan forgiveness on that, up to $100,000. So it's functionally the equivalent as a grant, but the state does have to pass to process this as a, as loan subsidy or loan forgiveness. The other part of this that's in the application too is the state is also considering eligible CSO monitoring equipment, so we want to add level monitoring at two of the key overflow locations. That is also handled as loan forgiveness or loan subsidy. So what happens with this is, once the city's approved for the loan, the city gets reimbursed. You submit a reimbursement request, so you're reimbursed for the costs that occurred. But at the end of this, the city isn't going to have to pay back either the engineering portion or the, or the CSO monitoring equipment. So all that is eligible for this loan forgiveness.
So we can, we can submit reimbursement as we go, so we don't have to lay out the entire amount of money?
Absolutely, that's right.
Okay, so it's for cash flow?
And on the, yeah, and on the equipment, it includes everything from, you know, going through the types of equipment, it includes the purchase of the equipment, it even includes the installation costs of that, so that's the $16,000 balance. So for tonight, for the board's consideration, we prepared the clean water SRF loan application. This is kind of a joint effort between us and the city. You know, the city's really prepared a lot of financial information, so the total request is for the $79,400, which includes the engineering and the CSO monitoring equipment. Most of this, again, is city financial information that's specific to the sewer budget. And this application does have to be signed by the city council, the clerk, and also the authorized representative, who is Laura, as the city manager.
So we would ask for a motion from the council to approve this application and to designate me as the authorized signature.
But just a little background, CSOs were designed as part of the plant originally?
As part of your sewer system.
Part of the whole sewer system. It's like, it was like a safety valve.
That's right.
Originally, because I know.
Because of the size of the pipes and it's basically when you have a weather condition, as we go in the past, over the years, you had catch basins, you had a lot of roofs tied in, so you had a lot of stormwater entering the system with the sewage and the pipes just weren't big enough to transport that all to the treatment plant. So these relief points are scattered around the city. And when we have an event like we had, you know, we're kind of calling the Halloween storm where the city had about 3.7 inches of rain, you know, it provided a relief point for many of these communities, just we got a huge amount of rainfall in a very short period of time and the, and the water table, the ground was really saturated, so there's no place for that water to go. So these provide relief points. They occur very infrequently. The city had an overflow at one location of the six on the Halloween storm, but prior to that, it's been a while since you've had observed, recorded overflow at any of the six locations, so.
No, I just wanted to have that little history background because I know that they were all part of the system when it was designed. It's a safety valve. Basically, it's meant to keep it from going into your basement.
Yeah.
So, you don't want it in the basement. So we would, and we would need a motion to approve the, the application. A motion made? Is there a second? Seconded discussion on that? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye oppose? Ayes have it? Motion carries? Laura, do I sign this one here? Do we all sign it or you have enough there?
I printed out some originals and it looks like you did.
Either way, it doesn't matter.
So is this the same document?
Yes, they're exactly the same. You can sign those.
I just sign these, okay.
So if he signs that one, then we should keep that one as the original.
Yeah.
Perfect. Right. He's got one of those as well. I think the mayor has a complete packet.
I do, I have a complete packet, I have to give back to you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, could somebody explain what exactly this is to put in, I'm not sure that I totally understand what the.
Before we get to that, we're going to need a separate motion for this as well. This is the engineering contract, that's the law.
Oh, okay, well, let's, yeah, we'll sign all this first, that's right.
Let's take care of business and then answer his question.
Okay, I tried, forgot about that. We have to do the, you're right.
Thank you.
Sorry, Chris, you're right, there is that other one, because it's, it's two things in one. Keep me on my toes.
This is complex.
I want to make sure I don't lose any of these stickies.
Right.
Actually, I'm going to just give all that, let's complete packet.
Okay, so you've got, that's the original.
Yeah, and that was all part of the original.
Taking these and I put them here. We don't have them coming to us.
So a couple of comments on the engineering services agreement. So once the city selects the consultant, we basically put a draft agreement together. We have to use the form that's required by the state. We sent a draft to that, in the state with a lot of a little effort. So they review everything to make sure, you know. So they review everything to make sure, you know, the fees, the scope of work, and all that are appropriate for your long-term control plan. They have a guidance document that we do have to follow, so this is really the document you had to meet the requirements of the, of the 1272 order. So this has been approved by the state as far as the fees and the scope of services. A lot of that's boilerplate, the two key parts of that, all of the fees, and then the scope of services is at the very end of the document.
But we need a motion to approve of the engineering, that we need a motion to approve the engineering contract. So move? Is there a second? Seconded discussion on that? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now Laura signs this page. I guess you've signed that page, you've signed them all?
Actually, it doesn't need to be signed.
Oh, it doesn't?
Yep.
Oh, she had all these signed things, so I'm going to give that right back to you. All right. Okay, Chris, sorry, just wanted to get everything, so we didn't get... What was your question, Chris?
Can you just explain what the money could be used for and the bed for another project, just so it's clear? My thoughts?
So this, as part of the 1272 order, that each community has to put this long-term control plan together, and the state has a guidance document that we have to follow. So basically, starting off, we're looking at the six overflows. We go out, we've got a bunch of fieldwork, each of those kind of has its own kind of separate issues. There's going to be everything from smoke testing to dye testing. We actually planned to use a drone for part of the day for some of the smoke testing work. There's actually going to be some flow gauging. So what we need to do is take each of these overflow locations, the precipitation information and the other data, and we assess, you know, when an overflow's occurred, why it's occurred. You know, each overflow or kind of relief point has its own kind of characteristics and own issues. In some cases, it could be a building roof, in some cases, it just could be, you know, undersized pump station. So then as part of that, we have to look at alternatives for each of these locations to obey the overflows from the monitoring data. And then we put these alternatives together, we have to put up costs, there's a public presentation process to kind of go through the alternatives, and then ultimately, we wrap this into the plan. There's recommendations for each location, there's funding sources, there's implementation schedules, that's ultimately, you know, at the last piece of the plan.
Is there an area that you're going to focus on? It could be the entire city, or is there one part of the city that's more of a problem than the other?
No, it's, it's each of the six overflow locations, so it's the contributing surface area to each of those, so it doesn't necessarily encompass the whole city collection system.
Maybe, I don't know, maybe it would help a little bit, so when, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, but from my, my layperson understanding, okay, there's, when the sewer systems and stuff and stormwater were put in back in the 60s, I think it was, there, there were these overflow outlets in the city, because if too much water came into the system, like if you, like we had a big, huge rainfall or something, if too much water came into the system, it would back up into your cellar and up your toilet and, you know, God knows where else. So it was required at that time to put in these outlet, overflow outlets. So time progresses, you know, 60, you know, how many years ago? 60 years ago, as the states looked at them, federally EPA looked at these things, and they said, now they're saying, well, yeah, we don't want this stuff going into people's basements and things, but we also just don't want it to be released. It's basically stormwater, it's not sewage, it's stormwater.
Right.
So the EPA now has said, okay, now you have to do something with these, and this is what this is about. So we have six of these outlets, we're complying with the federal and the state to deal with these overflow outlets that are perfectly, you know, legal, they were, did what they were supposed to do when they were installed, just the rules have changed, and we are keeping up with the changing rules. Am I basically right?
And we have minimal compared to other municipalities.
Oh, minimal, but you've got six locations.
We have six, but six, but I'm not, but I'm saying, Brooklyn and Burlington have a lot, lot more than we do, and they've got a...
So it's not just us, it's nationwide?
But we, but we haven't had issues except that one, the Halloween with one location, right? The Halloween storm with one location? But over the years, we've been able to handle it.
Yeah, we haven't had any major issues anywhere.
Right, but it's just something the state's requiring.
Given that it took a storm like the Halloween storm to cause an overflow, is, does the state take that into account? In other words, is the idea that no matter how much rain falls, there should never be an overflow, or is there some tolerance built into this?
That's a good question. There should be. If the state and EPA had their way, they would say no overflows for any kind of condition. We all know that's not realistic, so part of this plan is to really look at these alternatives and determine, you know, what's reasonable, what's cost-effective. I had a case in another community that hadn't had an overflow for five years, and they had one happen, again, on the Halloween storm event, you know, and you got to look at that, I think, nobody thinks it's a good thing from a water quality standpoint. However, you know, how much money are we going to spend in these situations? I mean, there's money better spent in other areas and other infrastructures, so that's part of this. I mean, the state has to meet this, you know, the city has to meet the state requirements here, but there's got to be some kind of cost effectiveness and reasonableness in addressing these issues also.
Okay, very good.
Well, is there, is there a project description that printed out that I may, that I may have? And the Halloween event, is that the event, is that the issue that was on the Glen Road, or is that, was that something else?
The Glen Road happened in the spring, that was a sewer pipe that broke.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. The Halloween event was the 3.7 inches of rain, we thought, in a very short amount of time, and the system couldn't handle it.
So what happened? It overflowed?
It overflowed.
Where?
At one location.
Where?
Bluff Road.
Bluff Road, okay. Yeah, is there a description, or is there something online?
There is something online.
On this, on your website?
Yep, go onto our website. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming all the way over.
See the Halloween events, the Halloween event.
This is the, do you want to take anything with you?
Whatever's easier, I can take stuff and scan it.
I think that's the stuff that's left side, okay? Thank you.
Just sign them.
No, what's up? You voted, voted.
On the contract?
Yes, we did the engineering and we did the law. I wrote it.
Dan moved it.
We did it.
I wrote it down. We made the motion second. It didn't vote it.
I did.
Yeah, we did.
It was in the other ones.
Yeah.
I got it.
We signed it. Oh, because you were signing it, that's why.
Yeah. All right.
I signed it my way.
The next item on the agenda is the Vermont Recreational Trails Program Grant Application. We have Mike Welch and Jessica Booth. Who's going to speak?
Jessica Booth, and I'll follow her lead.
Oh, okay, I already checked.
All right, so you guys received a nice packet, hidden packets. We are looking at going for another grant for the Potty Beach project. As you guys may remember, we received two grants already for this project, the AARP grant, which was $4,000, I believe, the BOREC grant, which was $35,000. Once we started to dig into this project and receive some of the grant requirements for the BOREC, we realized that we were required as part of that funding to follow along with the Trans Bike and Ped, biking pedestrian safety design guidelines, which in the end is certainly a wise choice, because it has, has a lot of information there about grades and certain turns and things like that, to make sure that the path is the right width and safe for the type of use that we were looking at. That wasn't something that we initially had in our plans when we put the project together in the beginning. So as a result of that, we did end up having to get some engineering done, which was not accounted for in the original budget, and the amount of earth that was needed to be moved as a result of those engineering plans was substantially different from what we had originally planned on. So the original budget that was proposed for this, we're going to require a little bit more, so we got to start on the project and finish, well, got segment one, which was the most, most earth that needed to be moved over at Potty Beach, got the bulk of that material moved this fall, and then we'll be picking back up in the spring. So the good news is we didn't get the project finished in the fall, which gives us more time to go find some more funds to help offset the overages that we weren't expecting. So the, what we have for you tonight is a request to go forward with a Vermont Recreation Trails Program Grant, an amount of $50,000. This grant application is due on the 17th. You need to submit the pre-application already to just talk about our interest in that project, and you guys have a copy of the budget. There is a match on this one, I believe it's 10%.
20%.
Much of which is done with Public Works, the amount of work that they're doing in the, the equipment and stuff that they're using.
So it's in-kind?
Is in-kind, yeah. So that's certainly more than covered, so you can kind of see the budget outline there. So I believe the request tonight is for your approval to go through, and we have a resolution that needs to be signed, and a letter of support from the city also.
I don't think I have a resolution. Or do you have a resolution?
I'm giving a memo to the city council, we included a resolution just for the proposed action.
Okay.
In that page, I think, to this.
I think I'm missing something. It's on the second page of that, yeah. Okay. Are you sure?
Questions from the council on this? So, anything you want to?
Jessica did a great job, as always. I think that this does go a long way, this particular project, to helping meet the objectives that you talked about earlier in the meeting, in terms of promoting the outdoor recreational economy. You've gotten a lot of support from other funders for this project. Jessica has had a couple of conversations with the chair who runs this program, she sounds very interested in making sure we get an application in, so I think it's got a good chance of funding. Public Works has done a great job out there, we've had all permitted, and to connect this, you know, get the design funds for this final segment and the rest of the money to pave it, is going to put the finishing touches on this project, so it strongly brings us forward.
So we would need a motion to apply for the Vermont Recreational Trails Program, an amount of $50,000? That would be the motion?
Designate Laura as the, the one to the parents, submit the application.
Do I assume that they have to read the resolution on the record?
You could do that if you want, and that includes everything, so that we're asking for approval to submit the application, commitment to the match, and designate.
Okay, I'll read this whole resolution then. It says, "Resolved that the city can, the Newport City Council does hereby authorize city manager Laura Dokene to prepare and submit an application to the Vermont Recreation Trail Program for the designing and construction of Phase Two of the Potty Beach Connector Trail, requesting grant funds in the amount of $50,000 toward an estimated $64,560 total project cost. The city council commits to provide in-kind labor, equipment, and cash to meet the $14,560 match. Resolved that the Newport City Council approves a letter of support for Phase Two of the Potty Beach Connector Trail Project, said letter of su, of support..." Get tongue tied. "Such, said letter of support to be included with the Vermont Recreational Trails Grant Program, application." That is the resolution. And so we need to move that and have a second.
Take that motion?
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it? Motion carries?
Thank you very much.
And then a letter of support that I need to sign?
I need a copy. I need a copy of that one.
You have the original letters that I need to sign, because I have a photocopy.
No, I did not.
Okay, we'll get a letter.
There's one right here.
You have it on letterhead.
I have it on letterhead, okay. Oh, you've got that one?
Well, that's just a photocopy.
You didn't give you the original?
Nope.
Okay. I will put it on letterhead and get it to you, sorry.
Okay.
Skip to the...
Okay. All right, very good, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
The, thank you, Mike, and to Jess. The next item is the annual vast access request, and Roger Goslin has arrived, right on time, and this is the, this is the annual request to allow the snowmobiles to continue to keep the trail that we've had the past couple winters coming down Broadview to Lake, Lake...
Landing Street.
Landing, thanks, Landing Street.
Yep, the proposal is the same as it has been, as far as I know, we haven't had any issues. Spoke of the last two years of having the trail there. A majority of the riders have been taking the lake as soon as it freezes, so they're not even really using the streets. And we did have a little bit of vandalism on the bridge this year from, we don't know who it is, they knocked over, we had some dividers there down on the railroad bridge that separated the snowmobile trail from the pedestrian path, and so they knocked over the dividers over, which cost the club some money, but other than that, everything's been really good as far as the trail goes down here, so. We're just looking for the same, same thing, the permission will start December 16th and end on April 15th, which is when the snowmobile season ends. And, yeah.
Seth wasn't able to be here tonight, but he wanted me to confirm that they have had zero complaints, they've had zero phone calls about any kind of disruption.
Yep.
So none, it's been a good thing.
Yeah, like I said, a majority of the snowmobiles are taking the lake, which is the goal, but we don't want to promote the lake, because as we know, it can be unsafe at certain points, so, but that's, that would be the best place for them to go, so I know when I came down several times, I took the lake as well, too. I don't want to go down the streets. So, yeah, everything's status quo as far as I was concerned.
Okay. Questions from any council members? And we need a motion to approve the permission for this upcoming winter season, if you so choose.
So move.
Motion made, is there a second? Seconded, discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it? Motion carries? So I guess it looks like only I have to sign this, Laura, I'm right here.
If you sign that and give it to me, I'll PDF it to you, I think we both have a copy.
Sounds good.
We'll do the same thing next year. Sound good?
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Now we have to think some.
Yeah, it'll come eventually, we don't need it yet.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. We have, we're on new business, Mr. Johnson. Okay, new business? I don't, any new business?
No.
Or any new business?
No.
Okay, we'll move back to old business, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, okay, so I did get a petition turned in, to vote to repeal the ordinance for the ATVs, we had enough signatures, and I have to warn that no more than four days, not less than 30 days in advance to revoke. So the two best dates for this, to be either on January 7th or 14th, I don't care which. Those are the only two dates.
That's a Tuesday, right? The Tuesdays?
It can be any day, but Tuesdays are always the exception.
Traditional voting days?
Yeah.
And that's a special election?
That's a special election.
So you said the cost is $600 to $800?
Yeah, it, between $700 and $800 to hold that. So I have to get 12 people in here to work and pay them and feed them and pay for ballots.
So...
It's not cost-free, there's a cost to it.
Anybody have a preference?
I don't, I mean...
I don't, either one of those two days.
Either one of those two dates. I guess just pick one of the dates and go with it.
That first pick for you. It was good for me. I struck the ones that weren't good for me, so those are the only two days that are good for me.
So what about the fourteenth?
Let's go, yeah, I was saying, let's go for the fourteenth. So, so Ja- Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand twenty will be a special election regarding the ordinance.
What are the hours?
The hours is eight AM to seven-
Eight to seven PM.
Eight to seven, eight AM to seven PM. And it'll be downstairs in the municipal voting gym.
It'll be set up just like the town meeting they, Jess, so it can't be anything bad there.
And so this, so this is, the or- the vote is to repeal the ordinance, so-
To repeal ordinance one twenty pertaining to altering vehicles within the city limits.
So if you want to repeal it, you would vote yes, if you do not want to repeal it, you would vote no.
Yeah, it's a little backwards than normal.
It's a little backwards.
Normally, you're voting yes to, in favor of something, but in this case, you're voting no to be in favor of.
Okay.
It'll be a little confusing. If you vote yes, they're going to repeal it.
Mm-hmm.
If you vote no, the ordinance stands.
Stands, okay.
Sort of just backwards from normal.
Yeah.
I'm starting with the terms. It's like eight to seven.
Eight to seven. Yeah. Okay. Moving on, any other? Any other?
No, that's all.
What?
I, I just wanted to know, can there be an absentee ballot? Is there an absentee ballot?
Yeah, anybody that wants to answer your question, yeah.
Yes, and I don't need the press to tell me who to call on, thank you. I was going to call on her, I just was looking to, and I hadn't gotten to her. So I don't need you to tell me who to call on, sir. Okay. I just have to look and with my glasses, I look at everyone. I was going to call on her, I just was looking at Mr. Johnson at the time. How soon can you get an absentee ballot? Which is a, which is a good question, because how soon can you get? I mean, when, how long before, no, how long before the ballots are being printed? Which is a good question for absentees.
If they're printed, they'll probably be ready the last week in December or something like that.
Okay, well, no, that was, because, because you have to allow time for them to be printed and then they've got to be mailed out.
There's a certain date when they got to be available, I think it's three weeks or something like that before the, the election.
Okay.
Okay, it's going to be pushed after the fourteenth.
Right, because you got to allow time in the Christmas.
If they're going out of time, they get to mail there and get it back.
And with the holidays, because you've got two holidays and so on. All right, any other old business?
No, that's all I've got.
Old business? Any old business? Old business?
Two quick things, council members, please, um, let Jess know if you're going to make it to the primary party, which is coming up in a week or two.
Uh, next Saturday.
Next Saturday, but next- Yeah. And I included in your packets and online the, um, capital investment plan that was, um, the result of our last public hearing. So I'd like you to look at that because the clock starts ticking today for the two-week notice. So the next public hearing will be on the sixteenth. We, um, fixed the typo and incorporated, um, Jess's appendix D, I believe is what it is. Um, there's a copy downstairs, there's a copy on our website, so, um, public hearing on the sixteenth. That's warranted, it's all good, so just always bring that to your attention.
Okay. All right. Then the next council meeting, well, actually, no, we're having a, next Monday, the ninth, we are having a budget meeting. And then after that, the next regular council meeting will be the sixteenth of December.
Yeah, and that will be the public hearing.
The public hearing on the five-year capital plan. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn at seven forty-five.
I'm going to have on shoot.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, discussion? All those in favor say aye, we adjourn.